Before you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as offered for the September thirteenth meeting.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen school board meeting as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. For the agenda, we have just the agenda without it being amended.
That's her record.
We were gonna change it, but we thought we better not. Julie, we thought about you. We thought about you today.
So it's, we've all had a chance to review it and ensure there are no necessary changes. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dell. We have a motion and a second to approve the September twenty-seven, two thousand sixteen, school board meeting agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Onto the very fun part of our meeting. We have celebrations and community reports. And first, we'd like to start with our Fairmont Elementary Safety Patrol with our teacher, sixth grade teacher, Mr. Bus.
Yes. If the students would come on up. I'm Jim Bus. I teach sixth grade science. And last year, we had Mr. Bob Mashke provided crosswalk service right by our main door. Halfway through the year, Bob had some health issues that made him step down from that position. We found ourselves at a loss. At that point, our sixth graders stepped up with six sixth graders covering all of our shifts for the rest of the year. So we turned it over to our sixth graders this year and asked for any, you know, any of the students who were interested. We have a handful of our students here tonight. But altogether, as of this morning, I have thirty-two sixth graders who are helping with our crosswalk, our safety patrol at Fairmont Elementary, and doing a great job. I'm gonna let them just quickly introduce themselves, if that's okay. And go ahead, Christian.
Hi, I'm Christian Tom. My first, my first day was at the K through two, and it was actually very great for people to actually wait.
Good.
Hi, my name is Paige Lindsay, and my first day was when I was at the main door. And it was kinda nice for people to wait for the crosswalk and like not use something, not go across something else.
Excellent. I, I'm gonna save you guys just a little bit of talking. We had a meeting last week, and I asked the kids, what do you need to have heard to know, you know, that would help your job, help you do a better job? And about half a dozen hands went up. And I called on the first person, and they said, if the adults would listen like the kids do, our job would be much easier. And all the hands went down. So what they're saying, when people walk through where they're supposed to, it really makes their job easy. So that's just a little bit of background, what they're saying here.
I'm Brooklyn Pfeffer, and my first day, I worked on the K through two main side.
I'm Paige Haney, and my first day, I worked on the K through two main side.
Hi, I'm Olivia Ortega, and my first day, I worked on the K through two main side.
Hi, I'm Lily Leaven. My first day, I worked on the K through two main side.
Hi, I'm Cooper Stubber. My first day was on the K through two main side.
And even as of this morning, we were adding students to our safety patrol. So a lot of these students, as they're saying, my first day, it's really recent memory for them as they do that. Do you have any questions for our students?
I have a general question. What made you decide you wanted to do this? It can be kinda scary stepping out on the sidewalk, the crosswalk.
Well, well, the reason why I wanted to join was because, well, one of the crossing guards that I, was, was Steve. I don't know his full name, but he was actually, he was actually one of the kindest people I've ever knew in this, in this school. And he actually motivated me to do this.
Thank you.
I think that would be Steve Langford.
Mr. Langford. Yep. He waves at everybody, doesn't he?
That's because the parents made them.
It's all voluntary. I commend you, students, for your leadership. It, it is wonderful to see you out there, helping to make, help our students be safe, helping our parents to be safe as they come and go out of the school. And just to clarify to the public, they're not on the public streets. They're in, on our property, in the K-two horseshoe or horseshoe area, and also on the three-six entry side in that horseshoe area.
Well, thanks to all seven of you. Safety is very important, and what a great example you are to your fellow students and to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Jackie Lemay with a food service report. Thank you.
Okay. So, just a little side note, Chartwells, you know, the company that you've hired to be the food service management, they require that I'm here four times a year. And so I like, oh, I wonder what I'm gonna talk about for, four times at the school board meeting. But I always kind of come up with something. But this is what, the things that I, that are important to me. It's just really a synopsis, really, just kind of a fluffy little fun piece about food service. So I think I might have told you in the past about Nutrislice. Maybe, Dell, if you hadn't heard about this before, it's the process that we have online where parents can see the menu and nutrition information, and they get all kinds of other tidbits about nutrition. And based on our enrollment, we are at twenty-five percent, meaning that twenty-five percent of our district is using Nutrislice, which is pretty good. Other districts such as Farmington, Adina, they're at twenty-five and forty-six percent. So we're right in there. So it's a really, been a useful tool for us. I do not print or do an Excel worksheet, like an Excel menu anymore like I used to. So I mean, I think it's a very helpful, very in-depth kind of way to advertise the menu. If you haven't looked at it, it's very, it's very pretty, and I think it's a really great option for people, especially for kids who use our smartphones, and they can, you know, check out what's for lunch during the day. Another big push for me, when I first got here, was catering. And indeed, I did increase catering for the first few months of, couple months of this year. Thankfully, because I have such good customers, the picnic that we do for the school, CER, we do a lot of pizzas for them. We do the Steph Johnson, it's a very good customer. So yeah, so we've really increased our catering, and so that's obviously not the whole goal of food service, because we are here to actually feed kids. But the catering is a nice side benefit for the school district and for the food fund. We are not gonna ever cater weddings, or baptisms, or funerals. So, you know, these are just things that are in-house. Mayor, you may probably know that we have added Saint Paul's Lutheran School as a customer. We are providing meals to them. We have about three, three employees, three Chartwells employees, who actually are on staff, and they bring the food over to the school. We make it hot, we serve it hot, and we clean up after them. It's one, it's going very, very well. We're very happy with it. I hope that Saint Paul's Lutheran is very happy with it. It's just been a really win-win, and I think that the feedback from parents and kids is that they like it. So we're very excited about that relationship with them. So just my little photos here. There's hummus and red peppers and celery. And we did a little sampling in this, in this picture on the left-hand side. That's just something we did for the three-six, three-six kids last week. Joe Brown would not eat the hummus, but, but we'll get him, we'll get him there sometime.
But I ate everything else.
Oh, well, good. Good. You know, a sampling out, especially, well, first of all, you know, the fresh fruit and vegetable program grant, we didn't get that renewed for this year. So now, in kind of, kind of to offset that, 'cause the three-six kids kind of, 'cause they're, they need to be introduced to new things. I want to do a lot of samplings with them. In October, I planned to do a grains, like a special grains sampling, you know, different things throughout the year. Hopefully, once a month, I can stay on top of it. And so that's what we did last week. And just some others, we provided scones for a teacher's breakfast and salads for a new teacher workshop. And then on the backside is the picture where, there's a picture of that stand-up cooler. It has sodas or water in it, and then that's our, that's our high school line, if you've ever been to the high school. And that, we've replaced that Pepsi cooler that's on the right with the cooler that's on the left. Now, of course, the cooler just got there today, so I wasn't able to fill it and make it look pretty for you. But it just got there, so I wasn't able to make it look like it should be. But it's gonna be really beautiful. I think it's gonna be a really great way to present grab-and-go, grab-and-go items to the students. Healthy options, all-a-cart things, just kind of increase options for the kids, increase sales for our program. And then lastly, my picture down there below, it says, you must have your ID badge or cash to purchase all-a-cart. So since I have the microphone, I want to officially put it on record that, at the high school, there is a process where kids get their meals, and it's through a badge. And you may or may not know the history of the badge. And so the kids come through, and they have their badges, and then they scan their badge, and then they go forward with lunch. Well, this badge has been in your school district for?
Six years.
Six years, probably. And that's great. I mean, I'm sure it has, has, has worked for a lot of programs, and it probably worked maybe for school food service. Officially, my opinion is that the badge program doesn't work for food service. I understand that it works for the library, the media center. It works for getting into athletic events, and I appreciate that. But officially, I would like to have an open conversation with, and maybe this isn't the place, but I really wanted to put this official, you know, opinion down, that the badge program doesn't work for food service. It holds up the line. A lot of kids don't have their badges with them. That's not something my department is not, we don't have the time to police that. We can't deny kids if they don't have their badges. We are definitely gonna feed them if they don't have their badges. And it just has become kind of a, I don't know what the word for it is. A contentious moment. It's a contentious issue for me, because I think there are a lot faster, efficient ways to get the kids through the line. When it takes them so long to get through the line with their badges or without their badges, they end up just leaving. They just, they just don't eat lunch. And sometimes my staff doesn't feed them lunch, because they're like, well, you don't have your badge, so we're not gonna feed you. Well, that's wrong. They can't do that. And I've trained my staff not to do that. And they know, they know that it's wrong. But I just think that it's not an efficient way to deal with school lunch at the high school level. And so that's all I had. Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment about that. You know, we talked about this before, that if Chartwells would assume the financial responsibility of students charging other students lunches on their account by using the PIN number, I'd be interested in talking about that. Because one thing that we put a stop to before you came, before we had the badges, we had students that were using other people's numbers and charging their food on someone else's account. And then parents would get mad, and the students would get upset. And we put a stop to that. In my opinion, I've never seen a high school student lose their driver's license. They, they just don't. Maybe we should put the barcode on the driver's license, because, you know, but I think one of the responsibilities of schools is to make sure kids are held responsible. Every student gets two IDs every year. They get two, and without any cost. And, but, you know, if, if Chartwells is willing to assume the financial responsibility of kids using other people's IDs and take full responsibility and have parents contact Chartwells and not the school, I'd be glad to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me. I appreciate you bringing, bringing the concern forward, because I want lunch to move, to proceed smoothly. I want kids to, you know, get their lunch. I want the process to work efficiently. And, and, you know, there may be problems with, you know, the system, how it worked in the past, but it may be time to revisit it and discuss options. So I'm certainly open to, you know, to having that discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you very much. I appreciate you bringing forward all these fun choices for our students to try, because, hey, I've never tried hummus. Next time, let me know.
Nothing wrong with hummus. If you like bean dip, then you'll love hummus.
I really do appreciate you exposing our, our students to these unique foods that are very nutritious for them, and showing them that there's more to fruit than just a banana, or, you know, that they're so.
Meat and potatoes.
Yes, there's so much out there.
Some children would never get exposed to some of those foods.
Right, yeah.
You know, I can think of stuff that I've never prepared in my home, because I just never knew how to purchase. You know, you go into the grocery store, a lot more is available to us now, but I don't purchase some of those things, because I was never raised how to, how to, you know, do that. Yeah, I can look on the internet now, which I never had when I was younger and that too, how to prepare it. But being exposed to that just widens their horizons and gives them more opportunities. And, you know, I know you don't, don't like it maybe on the first taste, but, you know, once it's offered again and again, then maybe children will, will, you know, add those foods to their diets and bring them home, and, and, you know, for the family and that, and then bring that knowledge home to their families. So I think it's wonderful that they're being exposed to different types of foods.
It's great.
Hummus included.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
And now we have another presentation from the FSAP and DFC Community Grant Group. With, we have Greg Brosma, Steph Johnson, and maybe some other guests that Chief Brosma can introduce.
Chairperson Green and Superintendent Brown, and members of the school board. We're really excited to appear tonight, and on behalf of Services for Challenging Youth, which is a nonprofit that wrote this grant, and the other members of the Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, to announce to you and the community about the results of the five years of work from the grant that we received from Minnesota Department of Human Services Alcohol Drug Abuse Division. So we're excited to report back to the community about the results. And to do that tonight, and the other thing that we wanna do is just kind of report to the community, we obtained a new grant, and so we're excited about that. So I'm gonna just, we wanna be quick. We just want to, first of all, announce some of the results of that work, so that you can see what the outcomes were. Steph Johnson, our coordinator, is gonna tell you a little bit about what the coalition is doing. And then also Dennis Lockwood here, who's the Chair of Services for Challenging Youth, is gonna talk a little bit about the Drug-Free Community Grant. So we're pretty excited to report back to you. Bottom line is, we really made a difference. And when I say "we," I'm talking about everybody in the community, the schools, all additional partners, and exciting to see this difference. But mostly, we're really excited about the kids, 'cause they're the ones that are truly making the difference. So, go ahead. Oh, you're way ahead of me. So, so anyways, I'm just gonna, this, when you work with the state, they do tons of reports. They really make you, you know, collect a lot of information. There's a lot of surveys, a lot of information. And so as we dove through some of the results of this five years worth of work, we thought this was one that kind of captured in a nutshell the difference that was made in the community. So it's a little bit of a busy chart, but I'm gonna talk a little bit. These are survey results of all seven through twelfth graders at Fairmont Area Schools in the five different years that we did this work. And this whole grant was heavily based upon a notion. It's called "most of us science." And really, it's all about the fact that most of us really wanna do what we think most other people are doing. And as far as chemical use, I mean, there might be five or ten percent of a population that might choose to be healthy and never drink any alcohol, no matter what they do. They just are gonna do that. There might be five or ten percent of a student population with enough obstacles and barriers against them. They might choose some alcohol choices a little bit, no matter what you do. But there is a very large batch of students in the middle that are really trying to understand what most everybody's doing. And so the fact of the matter is, use rates are usually, if not always, much better and much lower than what most students and adults perceive. So this whole grant, in five years' worth of work, was really heavily about correcting that misperception, because once that's changed, more people are gonna be making positive choices down the road. So, and then this is also about transforming a culture. This isn't a one-year program, where you just institute a few practices, and it's supposed to really make the change. This is really about transforming a culture. So we're pretty excited about the results. So this, this graph kind of points out really in a nutshell. You can see clear on the left side, in two thousand twelve, the number of students, seven through twelve, who never chose any alcohol during the course of a month was fifty-six percent. And by the year end, or by the end of the grant period, in two thousand sixteen, same survey, all seven through twelve, that had gone from fifty-six percent clear up to seventy-two. So almost the way from half to three-quarters of the population. And so that's pretty exciting just on that one alone. But as you move across the right on that graph, you can see that those that might have, we call it dabbled, or something dried once or twice, that was twenty-two percent of the population in twenty-two, twenty-twelve, and that it had decreased to twelve percent by the year end of the grant. So that was reduced in half. And as you go along the right, those that are maybe just have consumed it at higher rates, you'll see that it had an impact on them too. And that's a good portion of what the grant is about, changing the large batch in the middle, which will even influence those that maybe have some of those choices where they're using more frequently than others. And you can see, by and large, even those numbers are really small numbers of the student population, it made a difference on them too. So we're pretty excited about those self-report studies, showing that everybody's work here really made a difference. So then the next slide, Bob. I think it's important to report to the community that not only, 'cause everyone sometimes wonders about these surveys, and are they honest, and all that other stuff. This is important too, because during the same time period of the grant, I took a look at the consumption and possession of alcohol by a person under twenty-one, charges and tickets during the same time period. And during this time period, it has actually reduced by sixty-six percent. And so this is important to note, that beyond just the self-report use rates, it's really shown up in the work that we do. And I think that our work has been consistent across that time period. There are some additional things that may lead into that, part of which is maybe some other, you know, drug choices. Marijuana is one of the big things that we're gonna need to focus on down the road. But it's really kind of making a difference. And so we're excited about that. And next slide, Bob. And then this one is something I put together just to take a look, and this is important to report to the community. This chart shows students reporting any alcohol use in the past thirty days, grades six, nine, and twelve, over a lot of years of comparison. And in this graph, you can see the red line part, that's Martin County, and the blue is Minnesota. And you can see clear back in nineteen ninety-eight that we were quite a bit higher than statewide average. And through some of the great work that everybody's been doing in the community over time, you can see that we've actually been outpacing Minnesota, as the whole state is reducing use at a really nice clip. Now, we do notice in two thousand thirteen, there was a little uptick. Things changed a little bit from year to year. But we're excited about the two thousand sixteen Minnesota Student Survey that will be coming out soon. And we expect with the improvements we made all across the grant, that we'll actually be further down, beating the, the state of Minnesota. So that's just really important. It's exciting to see. You can see how much has been driven down, and I just can only help that when students are remaining chemical-free, that helps achievement, and really makes for a much better condition for a community. And this is really about long-term reduction, even for adults, because that just, we're really busy these days with some pretty hard drug choices. I think you see the paper loaded up with a lot of busyness. And as those youth rates decrease, that's gonna translate to some changes in our adult population over time too. So we're really excited about this. We're excited to be a part of the effort here. And now Steph Johnson's gonna tell you a little bit about our coalition, so.
Great. Well, first of all, I wanna say thank you to the school board for allowing me to have a place at the high school this year. It has been so exciting to have our youth coalition actually have our own lounge, our own spot, with our office at the high school. I brought along with me tonight, I'll let her introduce herself.
I'm Laura Hartke, and I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm a Yoko leader.
Good. And so our Yoko group is our youth coalition. It's open to grades seven through twelve. I think I've told you a little bit about it before. But I want you to take a look at that picture. That was our very first meeting we had this year. We had thirty-four students come, and it was at eight fifteen on a fast day. That's the academic fast day, where the students, if they earn a Fast Pass, are able to have free time and do whatever they choose to do. And all of these students chose to come to our meeting. And so I'm just really honored and excited to work with so many great kids. We actually also, on that same day of that meeting, sent up a busload to We Day. If you've heard of We Day, our school sent quite a few kids up there. And I know we had a large group of Yoko leaders that were on that bus. So I'm anticipating probably around fifty kids to come to our next meeting. So we're, you know, gonna analyze where we can meet. But this is a picture of our lounge, and the kids are just really excited to be able to stop in there. Some of the students come in. Well, I'll let Laura kinda tell you about what you guys do when you stop into the Yoko lounge.
So one thing we do when we go in there, we always sign into her room, as just so she knows who's in there. And then we can just relax and do our homework during a study hall or PSEO time, or just talk to Steph, if you need somebody to talk to. And then there's also like things to do in there, like she has the Keurig to like have coffee or tea, so.
Yep, we have hot chocolate and snacks. Snacks and hot chocolate are a great thing to bring people in. And popcorn, I like to pop popcorn, 'cause you wouldn't believe how many people stop and look in as they're walking by when they smell that delicious popcorn. And we have a great big sign that says "Yoko" on the wall. You can kind of see it up there, and explains what Yoko is. It's our youth coalition. And so, yeah, we're really excited about it. It's been nice. We don't have a lot of kids that come in, but some of the kids that have been coming in are the older kids, and we've really been trying to strategize. How are we going to grow our youth coalition? What are we gonna do this year to really make some positive changes in our community? We have our seven core principles that our youth group came up with. And, and how are we gonna promote that in our, in our school? And it's just been wonderful, so. We do know, if you wanna switch to the next, oh, and then I also wanna say, let me off the picture here. This is a picture of our coalition, which is open to the public. It's our Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which is now going to be open to all of Martin County. And I wanted to send along a picture. It's hard to see in there, but the exciting thing about that picture is, we normally have around twenty-five to thirty people that come to our meetings once a month. And at this picture, we actually, at this time, we have people from other schools coming in. We've invited it now, opened it up to all of Martin County. And so Martin County West, and Truman, and Grenada Huntley East Chain, which Grenada Huntley East Chain was there that day. And we've talked to Northrop, and, and we're going to try to help them get their own youth group started, and also some coalition work in their schools as well. So we're very excited about that. And Jackie Lemay has made some wonderful meals for us. We appreciate that. She does bring it in, serves us food as we have noon lunches. She does bring it in, serves us food as we have noon lunches, and then takes it out. It's great, it's been a huge help for us, to have people come over their lunch hours. If you wanna go to the next one? So, but, so what we're working on with our youth group, we have T-shirts that talk about what we are. We're Fairmont High School, students living above the influence of alcohol and drugs on the back of the shirts. They say we have better things to do, we would rather go shopping, read a book, all kinds of fun stuff, and it's been great to see the kids wearing our shirts around school. But we know that we still have work to do, and this is a great chart that shows the kind of work that we have to do yet. And that is the misperception, and I hear it every day. I just heard it last night when I was at the Powderpuff game. Someone said to me, "You know, you have all these kids on the football team that are out right now, that aren't, can't play because they've caught underage drinking, you gotta get them involved in your group." And I said, "Okay, you know, thanks for telling me, and we're doing our best in our school." So at school today, I happened to see Mr. Mahoney at lunchtime, and I walked up to him carefully and said, "Hi, Mr. Mahoney, how many kids do you guys have out for the football team this year?" And he said to me, "Oh, it's over 100." I think it was around 110. And I said, "Great." And I took a deep breath, and I said, "How many kids do you have out right now for not being able to, to play?" And he said, "Well, I think I have four or five that are working on their grades, that don't have grades that are good enough right now, and they aren't eligible." And he said, I said, "How many do you have that are not eligible because of alcohol?" And he said, "Two." And I said, "Thank you." And I breathed a fresh, of, of fresh air, because I realized, that's the misperception that we have in our community, and that's exactly what we're talking about. And if we tell our kids that, or if we spread that through the community, that it's only two, that's, you know, over 100 kids, that's less than what, 2%?
Yeah.
Right? You guys all know I'm not a numbers people, or maybe you don't know, but my team knows, I rely on them for numbers. But I was just thrilled to hear that that is a very small amount, and that's kinda what we were talking about with just that few kids that, you know, are probably drinking, and a few kids that never would drink, but that huge group that we are working on. So, what this tells you here is, in our, in our report, we asked the kids, first of all, in middle school, which is grade seven and eighth grade, "Do you believe that most other kids do not drink alcohol in a typical month?" That's the green one, and that is 71%. And then we asked them, "Do you drink alcohol in a typical month?" Of that, 99% of the kids say they don't drink, and they don't. And 71% is what they think, are they're thinking that they're drinking. So there's still a misperception there, that they're thinking more of the kids in school are drinking than they are. And if kids think that they're drinking, other kids are drinking, and that everybody's doing it, they're five times more likely to drink. So, we just wanna tell them, you know, we're, we're asking, and we're getting this information, and we have facts to show that there's not as many kids drinking out there, and we need to spread that word for them. Combined, well, the high school, so the high school's a little bit lower, 88%. It says self-report, that they do drink in a typical month, but they only think that half the kids, 50 kids, 50% of them do drink. And so there's a misperception there that we need to work on as a community, and, and that's part of our goal. And so, that's what we're trying to do, is teach and, and just educate everyone. This is a group of some of our leaders, and we got together, we've had a few meetings. This was during homecoming week. And so they're dressed up as...
Squad day.
Squad day yesterday, so they're all dressed in squads. And I sent out a text to, I have about 80 kids on my texts now, and I sent out a text and said, "If you don't have a squad to be a part of, wear your Yoko shirt and be part of my squad." And it was fun, we took a lot of pictures of kids who were in their squad. And then, this is when we got together and we're announcing some news, which I think I'll let Dennis go ahead and tell you about.
My name is Dennis Lockwin, I'm Coalition Chair for the Services for Challenging Youth and for the Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. I've been involved with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition since 2001, and we applied for a grant, that state grant, in 2011 and got that grant. That grant was a million-dollar grant, five years. It was first thought that we were gonna be working in all of Martin County with that grant. As it turned out, we worked, we were only allowed by the state to work in Fairmont. That was an issue for us, because it kinda led people here to believe that we were gonna be countywide, and we were disappointed, you know, obviously. So, when we moved forward, we had an exciting five years. We worked on several things, as you can see. We worked on the team building, we worked on the public, we worked on the school piece, so that we had a curriculum in the schools, et cetera. So, this was really to change perceptions, change norms, and then to build a, a youth group. Well, we worked tremendously well with the schools. And I just wanna thank, thank very much to the principals in the schools and for the staffs in those schools for working with us. We had this opportunity then to make success. As you can see by the things that we've told you about, the successes we've had, this grant was very good, but it focused on alcohol. What I'm here to tell you is, we've also applied now for a drug-free community grant. That grant we just received. That grant is $125,000 a year, allows us to still have a coordinator, but now we get to work in all of Martin County. We now also, through this grant, will work on three substances instead of just alcohol. We'll work on prescription drugs, marijuana, and on alcohol. Those three things are really important to us and to the coalition. Our coalition's over 140 people or so, and, and we have tons of people that help us and have, of interest. And we're also looking to add more people to that coalition, for yourselves and for others. We are adding to that coalition now, because we're going into other schools with curriculums. We're gonna go in front to sixth grade with curriculums in, in Truman, Grenada, six through 12s, Grenada Huntley, and East Chain, and, and Martin County West. So we're gonna have much bigger arena and a much bigger opportunity to impact the community by now going out and establishing youth groups. If these schools want them, this is, this is just an offer. You know, we're, we're just here to help per se. So if they want the curriculum, we'll help them with that. If they want a youth group, we're gonna help them with that. We're gonna ask them to join our coalition, and all of them pretty much saying, yes, we're in. So, my job here is to let you know, we're going forward, and that this grant, we got us for five years, renewable for five years, which gives us 10 years' potential to continue this focus on this particular issue. So with that said, I just wanna take a moment from all of us to say thank you for your support, thank you for letting us get, get involved with you in the schools, and allow us to help a, all our kids get better. And thank you again for their time.
Thank you. Any questions for any of them?
Hey Greg?
Yeah?
Does anybody have any data of, of how effective this type of work is, once the kids get to college? Once they get out of the home, because that's, that's the real danger zone. When, when they're on their own, when they're out of the home, out of the, you know, the, the guidance of their parents. And we know that, you know, a lot of, a lot of problems occur, you know, once that, you know, once they pass that stage.
I understand your concern, and somebody else posed that to me to, today, and I, I understand that there's a lot of things that occur quickly, shortly after leaving Fairmont. And as we drive that use rate down here, it's exciting to see that, but I know those students are sometimes going off to colleges, a whole new world. I do know this, that this, this project and implementation grant that we just finished up now after five years, there were 10 other communities doing that too. And they drove rates down, that's part of the reason why Minnesota's going down. And we were the, now the second batch of five years of 10 communities that did it. There was a previous five years. So I think all around, use rates is really starting to go down. Minnesota and Wisconsin and Upper Midwest has some strong chemical use history. And so potentially, that may all have some potential impact, but, you know, without a doubt, I know that's a concern, and the college campuses have got some real culture issues too. And so I honestly don't have an answer to that question, I'm sorry, but we're just doing the weekend here.
And I just wanna say that we do have, we have lots of trainings that come through my emails, that come through from our coalition about things like that. And our biggest thing is, we wanna get the conversations going with your, with our kids and our families, and help them, help, help the parents get talking about that early on and start talking. And, and I do know that there's something called program sharing that's coming up, and if you're interested in that, I can send you that information, it's up in St. Cloud in October. And I know that there's information about that on some of the breakout sessions and things, and, and with all of the different training things that we get in, that our coalition helps send people to. I know there are, there are programs that start those conversations and help parents at that point. Obviously, we're working with high school kids, so we aren't at that point, but we wanna get the conversation started, so people can, you know, so you can be comfortable talking about that. But I will be glad to send you the information about that, because I know that we do get a lot of information about that. And if you check on our website, fsapcoalition.com, there are places where you can go and click on, and all those different trainings are out there, and there's all kinds of resources about talking to your kids about that, 'cause that is so true, college can be so scary for that very reason. So, we wanna make sure we're starting that conversation.
I do know one bit of information, there's research to point out that kids that start drinking by age, it's like eighth or ninth or something, are far, five times more likely to be addicted as adults. And so as we continue to drive this use rates down and lower in younger ages, it will make a difference down the road. And so hopefully have some impact, maybe for that culture that occurs at colleges. Risky behavior, no doubt, but we're also very important that we really wanna drive the addiction and those kinds of things, because Fairmont is currently just playing out, and we're busy with some 90s-level use habits. And so as we continue to do this great work, and the partners here and the teachers doing this curriculum have been awesome. And so, together as a community, we can best solve this. And so that's one of the tidbits. So any other questions?
You mentioned the, the 10 communities that initially got this grant, or are we still at 10, or is this being expanded to more places now?
Now there's another 10, so there was...
So 20 in the state total then?
Yep, there was, 10 years ago, there was a batch of 10 communities that worked it for five years. And what's exciting about that is, even though their grant ended at the same time that we got ours, so their grant ended, and we got our grant for five years, their use rates have still been beating other communities that did not get the grant. And so it is about transforming a culture and building coalitions, to understand how to do better work. And so, now, we're just finished up, you know, and there were 10 other communities that had this five-year grant. And now, Wells, I think over in Terrible County, is a PNI and same grant that we did. So they're starting their own five-year planning grant, as well as nine other communities. So, 15 years' worth of work in all 30 communities. It's a long way to answer that question. Any others?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate all the work you all have done. Moving on to superintendent's report and calendar.
Thanks Nicole. First of all, enrollment update, I think all of you have a copy of the enrollment. Right now, we have 893 students in our elementary school, and 795 in our high school, for a total of 1,688. Students are still coming and going. We lost a student today, and we picked up a student today, so things are still changing. I'm gonna go through the calendar right now, I'm gonna go through it kind of backwards. So if you go to the very bottom of the sheet, just to remind the community that on Wednesday, October 26, which is a full month away, but we're going to have a school board candidate forum here at City Hall, and that will be at 6 o'clock at night. And just to remind the community, we have five school board candidates running for three seats, and that election will be held at the general election time on Tuesday, November the 8th. On Tuesday, October 25, another exciting thing happening in our community, we have the new teacher banquet, and we'll be honoring some individuals that have 25 years' experience teaching. And all of our new teachers, that will be held at the Holiday Inn, 6 o'clock, Tuesday, October 25. And just a reminder too, Wednesday, October 12, the next policy committee will be meeting. The policy committee has set up a time that we're going to meet, the second Wednesday of every month, and that meeting is held at the district office at 4:30 in the afternoon. Of course, all of our policy and our committee meetings are open to the public to attend, and anybody who wants to come, but we have a number of policies to review on an annual basis. And so we try to review about 10 policies every month. And tomorrow night is a special night, in that we are going to have a town meeting here, not here, but a town meeting will be held in Fairmont, at the Fairmont Elementary School at the media center of the library, and that will be starting at 6 o'clock in the afternoon. And the purpose of the town meeting, the school board has decided to have multiple town meetings this year, we are going to be in this, starting the process of developing a strategic plan for the rest of this school year and looking ahead for future years. But also, we'll be focusing tomorrow night on really three items. One, we'll be looking at the, we'll discuss a little bit about the operating levy renewal that we're asking the voters in the community to consider to vote for. That will be held on November the 8th, that is to renew our current operating levy, not a tax increase, simply to renew the current levy for the next 10 years. The second feature, of course, we'll be looking at the five pillars of the world's best workforce that the state legislature passed a few years ago, and we'll be focusing on five different categories and have a community conversation about each of those. The first one is to have all students ready for kindergarten. The second pillar is to have all students reading by the end of third grade. The third pillar is to reduce the achievement gap among socio-economic groups. The fourth pillar is to have all kids graduate high school. And the fifth pillar is to have all students be career and college-ready. So we'll have an open discussion tomorrow night about each of those five general topics, those pillars of the world's best workforce. And then finally, the new federal legislation that replaced the No Child Left Behind, we call that ESA, which stands for Every Student's Act. There is a requirement there too, that we really try to reach out to the community to get more community involvement in our schools. And that's one of the major purposes of tomorrow's town meeting, is to start that open conversation that we can have with our community, so they can come in and talk to us about what type of students, what type of graduates do you wanna see us produce? And so we think it's gonna be a very lively, very positive discussion tomorrow night, and we encourage anybody to come. We'll start at 6 o'clock, and we'll probably go for a couple hours. Once again, that will be at Fairmont Elementary School. And finally, just a reminder in the community, this is homecoming week at our high school, and we have a lot of homecoming events going on, a lot of sporting events, we have soccer and cross-country and tennis and volleyball, I think volleyball plays tonight again. Dimension tennis, cross-country, soccer, and of course, our football game on Friday night, we play St. Peter here at home. There is a, a homecoming parade on Friday afternoon, and a dance either on Friday or Saturday.
Friday.
Friday night, okay. The community's not invited to the dance, but the students are, okay. Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Moving on to financial business, Sue?
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the wire transfers from September 10 through September 22, and the payment of the September 27 bills. So your list of transfers and wires is very short, there's only two items listed. We are, had a charge of our RevTrack fees from the prior month's transactions, and then our revenue share from payments made through Commerce Bank. Any questions on the wires and transfers? Okay, then you have two registers dated today, September 27. The one that is for the ACT is for the 15-16 school year, and now, this is for the costs that we had for all of our, the juniors that took, took the ACT exam. And this is being reimbursed to us by the state for all of the expenses except for the desk that we have, so we can have the scores on a desk. And any questions? Okay, moving to the other register, that starts out with Dick Blick, that's for the 16-17 school year. Just have a couple to bring to your attention. And there's a payment to DeWora Electric, it does not have a check number, 'cause that was a payment made through Commerce Bank. What we purchased through DeWora Electric was a UPS, which is an uninterruptible power supply. And how the UPS works, it regulates power to electronic items such as switches and servers that are connected to these switches. So in the event of a power failure, or a power surge, or a brownout, something like that, the UPS can either shut down the equipment, or let the equipment continue to run for a period of time. And that, what that means is that who, whatever you're working... Um, and that, what that means is that who, whatever you're working on can be saved. And then by using this UPS, um, we keep our equipment running safely, um, from power problems and mitigating any damages, um, or incurring replacement and repair costs. So it's a really, it's a really good thing for our school district, and, um, we were able to receive an E-rate discount of 70% on it. So this is the net cost. Okay. Moving to check number 58-928, which is Bright Arrow Technologies. This is our cost for this current school year for our autodiler, and that is used for messaging to parents or different groups of parents for things like weather-related things or reminders. And... And then check number 58-969 made out to Skyward. This is our, um, our fees for the current year for our Skyward license, and we use Skyward for our student management system. Um, it houses our student data, attendance, discipline, demographics. It has some testing on it. Um, food service also uses this for, um, the free and reduced, um, application, how they're processed and documented, and also for tracking of meals, that type of thing. Okay, that's all I had for you on this register, and Julie and I did review, um, all of the reports prior to the board meeting. Do you have any questions?
If there are no questions on the, um, bills here tonight, I would offer a motion to approve the wire transfers for September 10th, 2016 to September 22nd, 2016, in payment of the September 27th, 2016 bills.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Uh, we're going to continue on to the proposed 2016 payable 2017 tax levy. Sue?
Okay. So you should all have an appendix A that looks like this, that Judy would have handed to you tonight. So as, um, Nicole mentioned, we have the approval of the proposed 2016 payable 2017 tax levy on the agenda tonight. And really, the big news here is that we are proposing no increase. So a zero increase and, and you'll notice in the paper what, you know, other schools and counties and cities are doing, um, but we're looking at proposing a no increase. Um, the levy is set in calendar year 2016. Taxpayers pay during calendar year 2017, and then school districts have these dollars available for their use during the 17-18 school year, which doesn't start until this coming July. So, you know, we just got going into, um, the 16-17 school year, but we're already looking ahead, uh, an entire school year. And that's, that's just how the process works. And, um, what you need to do, what a school district needs to do by the end of September is have the board, um, pass the proposed amount, and then in December, we look at the, the final amount. Um, so even though this pay 17 levy is for the 17-18 school year, I just wanted to remind you of two things that happened for the 14-15 school year. And one of those is that's the year in that the state, um, decided that they could fund all-day, everyday kindergarten. And, um, we had had all-day, everyday kindergarten for many years before that, but at that period of time is a kindergarten student was considered a 1.0 pupil unit. And then the other thing that the state did is they changed, um, they simplified, um, how the pupil units work. So all of our students through sixth grade are considered a 1.0, and then our secondary students, so grades seven through 12 are considered 1.2. Uh, the formula allowance for the current school year is $6,067. So what that means is for every student that we have through sixth grade, we receive $6,067. And then for our students in grades seven through 12, we receive that times 1.2, so $7,280. Uh, the formula allowance for the 17-18 school year, what this levy is for, is also at $6,067. And then hopefully in the spring, the legislation will, the legislators will choose to increase that, that formula. Uh, school districts have levy authority in two ways. One is by legislative action and the other is by voter approval. Um, you will recall that something new for the current school year is school districts now have the authority to levy for long-term facilities maintenance issues. We were required to come up with a 10-year plan, which we do revisit, um, at least annually. And what we're able to do now is plan out our deferred maintenance projects such as roofing repairs, boiler repairs, water heater repairs or replacements, painting, lighting replacements, all those types of things. We're able to plan that out over a number of years, just as, as a homeowner would try to plan those types of things out. And the funding for this long-term facilities maintenance rolls out over three years. So for the current school year, we receive $193 per pupil unit. For the 17-18 school year, so for the levy that we're looking at tonight, um, it is $292 per pupil unit. And then for the following school year, it's $380 per pupil unit. And the long-term facilities maintenance, um, levy does replace the health and safety and deferred maintenance. So this levy is based on estimates. So I, um, we work, um, in our office and come up with estimated pupil units for that 17-18 school year. And as we mentioned, you know, Superintendent Brown just talked about what our head count is right now. So we're really looking out at a year. So we do know that they are estimates. And then we estimate things like reemployment as well. Well, then what happens is when you have actual numbers for pupil units and expenditures, then there are adjustments to future levies. So our maximum levy authority would allow us to go up 2.13%, but looking at this appendix A, um, we are, worked with the operations committee and actually spoke with the staff welfare committee the end of last week, and we're proposing to under levy in one area, leaving us with a zero increase. So no increase at all. Um, just to give you a little history, and it's kind of down on the bottom part of appendix A in the chart, but for pay 13, our levy was $5,468,000. Pay 14 was $5,577,000. Pay 15, $5,141,000. Pay 16, which is for the current school year, $5,399,000. And we're, um, looking at proposing, uh, the pay 17 at that exact same amount, $5,399,000. Again, it's the proposed amount, and after board action tonight, um, the next steps would be, um, hit, years back, we had to have a separate truth and taxation hearing, and we're no longer required to do that. Um, instead, the information must be shared with the public at a board meeting, and that part of the board meeting can't start till after six o'clock, and the board is allowed to vote on the final levy at that time. At that time, the board can reduce the levy, but they cannot increase it unless there's voter approval. Um, we have that meeting already scheduled for December 13th. Um, again, this levy is for revenues for the school district to use during the 17-18 school year, and the operations committee and administration is recommending a zero increase for the pay, proposed pay 2017 levy. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. You're welcome. That's good news.
That's very good news. You know, as you look at that, and Sue did mention, I just, I just want to bring that up again, that in, in the year of pay 14, you know, we took, you know, a decrease in what we were passing on to our taxpayers for what, you know, we were asking them to, um, raise for us from their taxes and that. And so then with pay 16, we are remaining with that same amount. And so we're just, you know, not having any extra taxes added to it. So the taxpayers then with that will pay the same amount as they did last year to the school district.
This shows that we have a steady ship as far as steady enrollment, the, the programming that we offer, um, and that, that, that we are not asking for any more money than we need. And I, I think that's a great way to, uh, to run the operation. So thank you for your work on that, your diligence.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We don't make any motion now, right?
You do need a motion.
We accept, to accept the proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to accept the proposed, um, property tax, um, as presented here tonight in appendix A with no increase and a 0% increase over last year. Or how, is that a good way to say it?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It is very notable that the increase is zero. And that can't be overstated, so.
Yep. All right, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Uh, we have no old business. Moving on to new business, we have the teacher seniority list. Julie?
Yes, in your packets you received, um, there is the Fairmont Area Schools Certified Staff Seniority List. All staff members have had the opportunity to review the information. Um, the changes have been made, and so all we need to do is make it official. And, um, I'll make a motion to approve the 2016-2017 teacher seniority list.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Uh, moving on to policies, Rufus?
Uh, the policy committee met September 14th and reviewed 10 poli, or 10 section 400 policies. There were no or very minimal changes needed to four of the policies, so no further board actions required. Six of the policies included, uh, MSBA recommended changes. These policies are enclosed for review and approval is recommended. There's an additional policy reviewed by the committee, number 208, requiring a two, which requires a two-step process for approval for the policy revisions. Currently, the po, currently, policies are brought before the board first for review only and brought back for a second meeting for approval. The policy committee is recommending that this policy be changed to allow the board to review and approve revisions in one meeting when no further discussion is needed. A copy of this proposed policy change is also approved. So I'd like to make the motion to, we need the motion to approve, yeah. Motion to, to approve the policies that have been reviewed and to make that change to the policy regarding the approval process.
Well, we have to have appendix H, the policy, policy that's changing our review of policies, has to come back for a second reading next week. But we can approve appendix, appendices B through G, which is policy, I don't know if you want to list the policies that are in...
Uh, there's a policy pertaining to drug and alcohol testing, one for license status, and one for health insurance policy, another referring to meet and confer, which is, uh, regarding a requirement for the school board to meet with, uh, the teachers' union.
So those ones we can vote on tonight?
Yep.
Okay. So I entertain a motion for an approval, or a motion, you made a motion for those?
Second.
Second. Rufus motioned in second, all in one. Okay, we need someone else. All second.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the policies mentioned. Any discussion?
So all the, the policies with the 400 numbers were the ones that were reviewed, and then the 208, the 208 is brought back next meeting?
Well, the policy 416, 424, 427, and 430 can be approved tonight. The others, because there were changes, some of them very minor, we have to bring back for a second reading.
Okay, thank you for clarification there.
Uh, any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Uh, moving on to the policy revisions that we have first reading for, uh, most of those changes are very minor. Uh, some of them are, um, grammatical, some of them are just updating them to keep them current with state law. And those are policy 408, subpoena of a school district employee, 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school, 420, 421, 422, and 423. Those all are very basic. Rufus, do you want to go into more detail about policy 208?
Uh, that's the, is that the implement, is that for the review, the double review?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so the 208 currently requires that, uh, policies, uh, first be brought forward, brought to the board for review and then brought to a sec, a subsequent meeting for approval. And so, um, so the change in the policy would, would allow the board to, to review and approve in one sitting. And so that would, that's the, and then we will, so...
And I'll ta, I'll talk a little bit about this. We talked about how to, how to implement 208. You know, most of the revisions that we're looking at are pretty minor, and, um, to expedite the process on a monthly basis of policy review and implementation. We also wanted to write this in such a way that if any one board member or maybe a member of the public came to any of you to say, "I have a concern or a question about X policy," that any one board member at a board meeting could say, you know, "I'd like to hold off and, and let's take a look at that again and, and wait for that particular policy to be approved at the next meeting." So we could get some more information. And, um, so we kind of wrote that pretty generically, basically saying if there are no questions or concerns relating to the revisions, the board may grant approval with the first reading. And if board members feel additional discussion is required, then the policy will be brought back at future meetings. So there's kind of a catch-all there.
So it'll be brought back to the future school board meeting or back to the policy review committee for, or is it either?
It could go either way.
Okay.
Right.
The final approval for any policy has to come before the full board.
Exactly.
So it can go back to the policy committee to make revisions and changes and bring it once again before the...
Depending on, depending on what the, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, Part III letter C. That's what, that spells out there.
Right.
It basically, it, it just makes it so that we don't have to bring to the boards for second readings. For example, um, in one of the policies we're doing this with tonight where we have to bring it back, it says "it is" instead of the policy of the school board is.
Well, it's just efficiency of, of our time. And so, you know, it's just appreciated that the time that we do spend, that there is some efficiencies noted, so.
So we will bring those back to the board for review, uh, and, and hopefully passage next, at the next board meeting. This was our first reading. Any other questions or discussion regarding those policies? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, board committee reports. Dell?
Well, let's talk more about policy committee. We, we do meet the second Wednesday of every month at four thirty, um, and that occurs at the elementary school. And the public is invited to that, and we would actually enjoy having, um, participation with that. And, uh, that's, that's about all that we want. I mean, we, we talked about everything. We'll bring that back at the next meeting. So we really do want to encourage the public to participate. It's a great chance and opportunity for your voice to be heard, and these meetings, um, are very important, and they go on, you know, we're always meeting about stuff, so please, we encourage you to join with us.
Thank you. The meeting is in the, uh, elementary school in the school business office. Thank you, Dell. Any questions for Dell or anyone on the policy committee? Okay. Operations committee meeting, Dan?
We met yesterday, and the main portion of the meeting was covering the, uh, the levy and the truth in taxation hearing that Sue covered with us tonight and that we approved. Uh, we also took a look at the lease for the Hunt farm land that the school owns. Uh, we had a proposal, uh, and we had some discussion about that. We also looked at the, uh, how, what are we going to do with, uh, a gift that we have been given, uh, by the school? Uh, the 1986 Corvette that was donated to the school, uh, by a private party, uh, after a quick consultation, um, with, uh, an attorney. We decided that all the net proceeds for the sale should be designated to the vocational department, uh, of Fairmont High School, and we are going to pass around the word to try to get, um, the information out there so we get the most interest in this sale. Uh, the, the vehicle has been appraised at about $15,000. It was, uh, um, it's being just, uh, given a once-over by the automotive department at the high school to check everything out. And, uh, so there are many different ways we could do this, online auction, local auction. We decided not to do a raffle because that entails a whole different set of rules. That's a contest, and the state has rules about doing, it's a lot of extra paperwork and a lot of extra, um, hassle to do it that way. So we're just exploring the avenues to try to get the word out about that and get the, the, the highest amount... and get the, the highest amount of money out of that donation so that it can be put to good use in our vocational department. And one other thing that we looked at, we have a problem with a hot water boiler at the high school building. Our buildings and grounds director Tyler Garrison presented two options. One to either repair or one to replace a, a hot water boiler that had had some previous problems. We decided to, as the operations committee, to approve replacing that boiler rather than spending some money on a repair that is not guaranteed that it would work. So we have two hot water boilers that, that provide that hot water to the junior, senior high school building. Ordinarily, they run about half and half. Right now, we have just one that's operating full-time, so we would like to get that fixed so that.
It's putting a lot of stress on the system.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to overstress the system or anybody that has to take a shower after practice. We want to make sure that they have a cold, a nice warm shower, not a cold one. So we approve that and that should be fixed within a month or so, hopefully.
We're hoping.
That's all we had.
Thank you. Any other discussion or?
Well, I, now that I'm looking at the agenda, I was just assuming that I, we had a Southern Plains board meeting last night. It's not on the agenda, do you want me to give a report? And, or do you want to wait till next month when we can, you know, when it's on the agenda, do you care? I mean, I have everything ready here, so.
We can hear that report.
Okay. Well, we met last evening and we had an interesting report from Kristen Russell, who is one of our special ed teachers who is using implementing, she's working on her master's degree, but she's implementing a lot of technology in the classrooms. And, and she came prepared with a whole list, oh, I probably can't find it here now in my papers, of different programs that she has researched and that other staff have researched. When she's gone to conferences, she's on a couple of mailing lists of, you know, specialties in her area and that, in which they found really good, some, there's a fee for the, the programs to use. Some are very reasonably priced, some are a little higher, some are even free. And how that she can use that within the classroom. And we all know that our students are being exposed so much to technology that they, they find that just as easy as what we ever did using just a adding machine or anything like that. You know, I know that's kind of old for some of us, but, you know, just as, you know, the rotary dial telephones and that. I mean, they're just, they're just so exposed to it that these kids are learning so much so early in their lives. And so it's just really, you know, good to see how she can use this within her classroom to enrich their education with those other avenues of the technology. And so it was just very interesting to hear that. What else we talked about, we had some resignations, terminations, mainly resignations and retirements. And then we did have hirings, there was eight individuals that were hired. There were three that had resigned through the, since the last meeting we had. We had four people who have received some lane changes and so they received that additional steps to their salary. We approved some employee work agreements with the office staff within the Southern Plains office. And, let's see, and then there was also instructional sharing agreements between Blue Earth Area and United South Central for some different programs that they have, that they can share staff and that. Otherwise, really was not much else at the meeting last night. We won't meet now again till November. Southern Plains doesn't meet every month like some districts do because of the business. It's, it's kind of timed out so when there's more business to discuss and that, so. But we are going to meet our next meeting in November, I think it's November twenty-eighth was the date. And we're going to actually meet over in Winnebago where a lot of the programs were moved. If you remember, last year was the first year that we had all the programming over there. So now we're going to meet again now to kind of see some of the changes in the classroom. And there's been a remodeling project going on, so we're going to see some of those changes within the building too. So be interesting to see that.
Thank you Julie, any questions for Julie? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I have one more thing.
Oh, thank you Joe.
Well tomorrow, just a reminder, tomorrow is a pajama day at the high school. And I'm going to still wear a suit. At the elementary school?
High school's animal day, I think.
Animal day at the high school, pajama day at the elementary. I'm going to still be wearing a suit tomorrow. Not my pajamas.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looking for some hummus.
No hummus.
Are we good? Someone want to move to adjourn?
Everybody come out to the parade on Friday and the football game Friday night and all the other events this week and support the kids. It's going to be beautiful weather, so enjoy it. And I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you Dan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, this meeting is adjourned at six fourteen PM.